I would like to raise the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands on nation's every side, with the vote of the majority and justice for all.
I convene as Walworth County planning and zoning board. It's very old business. New business. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Have a second, any more discussion? Here not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Convene as Walworth County Board of Zoning and Justice. Very old business. New business. Here now, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
A second.
I have a second, any more discussion? Here now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion passed. I convene as Board of County Commissioners. Uh, take a motion to review the agenda. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I have a second, any more discussion? Here now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. I'll look for him.
Uh, I would like to, there's a question on this. Uh, just to set the record straight, I was confident that I should not have been able to vote on the underlying issue with the license. I did get that through the attorney before the point he came out. Just clearing something up, uh, before last meeting, I did contact, uh, attorney, asked him on, uh, it was all right to be able to vote on this. He said that, in his opinion, uh, I mean, this license has no bearing on county for the license. I was giving the vote. Uh, our state's attorney said that, uh, his opinion, I was wrong, knowing that, but that's just his opinion. And our attorney says that I click for it. Going by his opinion, all five of us should not be able to vote on anything different, budget, taxes, or legalization, or anything like that. Because we're all involved in that, so. I just wanted to clear that up, that I did contact with, I did contact attorney before that meeting. He got his opinion, which is different from our state's attorney. We all know, everybody's opinion is not always right, so. Just wanted to throw that out.
I think we'll move to fourteen, consider motion to approve county commission minutes of May nineteen twenty twenty. If we have a chance to go over that. So, I'll take the motion. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Oh, sorry, I have a second. Any more discussion on that? Here now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion passed. Consider motion to approve claims you paid as presented, because everybody actually has to go with funds.
Thank you, that's what it is. The speed guards, is that just a little, like that, block the blocks, or, pre standard?
No.
What's the, what's the speed guard?
It's the shields.
Like what, what?
Yes. So they were online for anywhere between two hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty dollars each, and I was able to find them. And the auditor down over. Right at the front, Tony. Said that the little gold thirty company was making, so they pulled in money, cut it for thirty-five dollars each. We delivered it to us, so. We had one in front of each person, going places, and one between the workers.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I have a second, any more discussion? Here now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion passed. Amanda.
All right. So that's, you know, the Rock and Earth, we're asking the only exciting new updates for October nineteen, and it's sporting, which is kind of just hard to say where. Um, but, uh, there is a, a question that I've been brought to my thinking several times, and also just hearing out the public, was when the, the newspaper, um, had posted, or had broken out a long, that's a positive case. Uh, in Walbridge, when the person was arrested in Walbridge, um, and that he had been arrested, so, it was like that. The question I was asking was, well, if there was one, please help on the term of the telephone, say, the number of the law, um, just to say, it's high, it's not really the same as earlier, but, and. The way, from the very beginning of this, or the department else, that, um, said that they will report those numbers, like, all to the persons, telling a residency. Um, so you would have to think, oh, here, and get tested, which they both were seeing a lot, so, I was particularly, I've never looked at an account, and that number, Walbridge, and Walbridge. So, I want to just put it, uh, for you, I have a few questions, and then you can read the public, uh, answer, I'm not saying, I don't know, but. Um, other than that, um, you know, we're still meeting weekly, as a region, um, and it sounds like there's basically the same page, for houses and certain, uh, uh, listings, and, you know, how, you know, the, 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 the situation, but. So, we have that, a couple of new additions, talking about, I see that first case this week, uh, so I'm really, uh, you know, put that first initial. Uh, all of here, that the whole of the, the, so, I wonder that, you have lots of questions, but, um, yeah, we're just gonna, we're just gonna go over it, so. I know that, um, the state didn't ask us something, um, and. Here, sir. I've seen that, you know, there was zero cases, like, in, so, we can see that we're, or, yeah, so, yes, yes, yes.
Question, one question, uh, somebody asked me, okay, like, this last one, they give to the customer here, it's positive. So, they've been, they know all these businesses, they're all, for sure, yes, but I believe all those businesses, that they're likely to.
They're not going to, um, does that violate stipulation, uh, and so. So there's no way, yeah, there's no way around it.
I agree, but, I'm saying, it does, it is, uh.
Exactly, exactly. And I can't have so much, and I just know that, um, you know, we will not get any kind of information for this, as a, for this. Don't believe those people that, you know, it's, you're not our state, we're getting tested, consider, our base, you know, they know what we're supposed to do, and, especially, this is state, you're not part of the home, but you can't be.
Said that. Can't the businesses be operated, uh, occasionally, uh, a person, whatever, at least if we do that. That this person, well, if you're just business.
Right.
If somebody gets tested, probably, with the government, my state, not with the whole body.
So my understanding is that, um, as soon as a person, uh, so they go into, um, tracing, or, uh, asking the person, you know, who do you think you've contacted? Um, where has he been, and then they, and then they, uh, most people, I think, I think, uh, get a problem, the person where they've been, uh, so. I would, I would hold, and I think, um, that, just like, if, I was just, I was around you, and going back, when I had one, and said, I was, like, Kevin, and they would contact you, and say, and they would say, you have been arrested, it was just possible, uh, over fifteen. It would be the same concept of businesses, so I would think, yeah, so, uh, that the businesses, that this person was able to identify, and feel that in, uh, that they were involved, and, 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 that's community, so, we, 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 so, if you're not going to worry, you know, that. But, um, they will, or they will have all of those questions, so. So, individually, just not all of them, they probably, they don't. There's one on our poll aside, um, I do know that Gary has updated on, on the, the, uh, you know, payment reimbursement, um, and he had invited me last night, um, on his paper, so, so, I wanted to talk to you, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Very lucky.
Given number seventeen, consider motion for budget supplement for your new service system. Notice you've been given that the Board of County Commissioners in, for the county of Walworth, the city of Salvi, South Dakota, on the fourth day of June twenty twenty, in the hour of nine fifteen. Walworth County Boardhouse, County Commissioners change, chambers, will meet in a regular session to conduct, conduct a public hearing regarding a supplement to the twenty twenty Walworth County budget. As through SBC, that was seven dash twenty-one dash twenty-two, this proposed supplement, an amount of fourteen dollars, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and twenty cents, to cover the budget for some, not a chance, thirty dollars, so. Creations one oh one dash one sixty-one, dash four twenty-six. Four dollars, suppliers, fourteen thousand, three ninety-nine, twenty. Every weekend, so, 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 funding one oh one dash zero, dash one oh one, like, one oh one, four dollars renovation fund. Fourteen, three ninety-nine, twenty. Note is further given that any person, persons, or the representatives who are interested in improving organization, such supplement may appear, and be heard about, as they call it, be dated, so, we'll stop to go to this, like, the day of May, right, so. I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I have a second, any more discussion? A little wider thing, but, we said, we.
I'll just probably wait a minute, before the vote.
In case, for some reason, somebody blocked me last time. You know, I think, uh, it's a. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay. Motion passed. Here is not, here you go.
I'm gonna either have to drop it by, because I'm giving every sentence, but, I can't find it in my stuff, so. What I did, I know that this is, like, four pages long. Do you want one to ready for your stuff? Okay, is there a table where it can?
Just on top of the library.
Um, I know it seems long, because I wanted to let you know where, hang where we're at, and then we're getting ready to talk about what's again, but I'm ready to give you a little. Muxy at what's going on, so, let me know when you're ready for me to talk.
Ready.
Okay, um, we have two cases to start off that, uh, twenty twenty eight month, um. Nothing has been decided yet on, on this, of this individual, that is arrested, of the county, has not yet returned the application process for the supporting documents. I have previously done this individual, like, the end of last year, that's qualified, and know for that individual could purchase, uh, insurance on the relevant, for eighty-eight dollars a month. So knowing that. Um, the ability to purchase, relates to, or to, any, uh, health insurance, was there at the end of the year last year, um, I'll check again to make sure that we, um, I would say, we will deny, because there was, uh, to pay insurance. Um, second case, twenty twenty eight three, um, again, it was definitely recently coming, applications, and, and, um, the hospital right now is requesting for payment, for both these families. Um, but I'm waiting to have an application back, and I am going to do the thing that, um, there is some kind of insurance there, or plans, so, I really don't think, you know, that'd be something, uh, problem. Uh, I went back, medical, looked, two thousand and eighteen, nothing stood out to me that might possibly come back, and I just remember sometimes, they spent their two, three years down the road, but, and, like, right now, everything looks like, good. Um, two thousand and eighteen, there was a, thirty, about a thirty thousand, uh, dollar claim, now, thirty thousand is not the Medicaid rate, um, but I am putting that, you know, to the age of individual, and there is still an impression, on whether the individual was actually arrested. While we're, you know, residents, in six days, we, um, have the vote that he's living, um, we have that driver's license, we, um, have a checking account, we're paying, we have all forms, you know, kids are all with the school system, or vice versa, but. Sometimes I think it's harder to find somebody to, find individuals to answer these questions, than it is to, sort of, warrant to arrest, in some days, I think.
What's a unit, it must be sixty days, I mean, I'm writing up that, that column.
That's the timeframe.
Okay, I mean, you gotta have, like, four, five boxes, or, what makes you, consider ten, to be able to stay here, and, just, and get your, uh, utilities, and, and, get your, utilities in your name. You can, uh, change the driver's license.
It's just a, uh, like, uh, close off those box, that, with, all, like, it would, you know.
You have that, this is black, right?
Those letters are, you know, filling out, there's something through, utility, something like that, because they have, anybody can go get a student, close off those boxes.
No, they have to, they have to, that's from the supporting documents, you have to show me your electric bill, your super bill, your wire bill, your whatever, you know, your things, so, that is all part of the supporting document, that are here. Um, then, for two thousand and twenty, this list is long, um, thirty thousand dollars, or forty thousand dollars, and you remember, these are not Medicaid rates yet, twenty-five thousand, forty-five thousand, five thousand, forty thousand, and fifteen thousand, and maybe eighty thousand, seventy-four cents, for grandpa, right now, at the end of May, two thousand. Two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty thousand, thirty-four cents. Now, um, I know a lot of them, I, the individual, has a possibility of insurance, um, there's a couple, there were, um, there could be, the, um, they about telling, but. All of those that I just read off to you, have not yet been requested by the hospital to pay that bill, first, who we talked about, I have received a question constantly, to pay that bill. Um, I just had a chat with, um, the hospitals, to care about some, listening in, and gave me a two terms, that, um, we had talked about, right, that, we have, like, you know, the, the, or, form, it's just, okay, or, like, they would, you would get, you know, they were really, for some, you know, that's the same for your insurance, and the gifts. And, uh, we talked about how experts, you know, aren't guilty, and my statute says it needs to, um, I said, I don't know what's going on, but I'm willing to, we can't do our, um, we can't tell you that two years down the road, because. My Medicaid rates, I get slow cash change every six months, and I don't have the ability to go back to two thousand, or, two, you know, after two years, I mean, I can't go back after two years, I see, minus, six months, and the previous six months. So, our monthly cost, I am, but, uh, 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 so. I can't do without the correct rate, it would be more, I mean, the Lord of Action, so hopefully, we're gonna get it corrected, um, and, uh, I stood pretty firm on my ground, that, you know, I don't want Mr. Harris to be on our board. You know, so that's not, we don't want to pay for what you pay, you know, we can't do, or, you get a little, it's a fellow, it's always, like, how, like, us, and how, like, we're on our tour, for ones that, the things we were missing, and, and I just said, you know, you have to do better to pay us that information, so we can make your way to the nation. Because I said, I, I said, insurance announcement is not free, so would it be in your best interest to do practically, maybe, the determination without you, and not giving one percent of the money, this practice, plus, village cat flash, that makes sense, so. Uh, hopefully, we'll see a little bit of improvement there, um, she was going to send out the emails to people that could fix those problems, and, you know, like, you, oh, my, so, they, they'll see, somebody, who, 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 that explanation, a lot, that's, so, uh. And when I, when I, like, the, the, I like to, right away, get that figured out, find out what that G R G rate is, which would, that diagnostic related, um, cross, um, if, uh, inpatient or outpatient, and, and get that figured out, right away, so, we're ready to go. How to correct, how, like, she, that one page, every time I have a voucher, when I, it feels like, like, I pulled out my checkbook, wrote that check, so.
Who would, huh?
Huh? My checkbook couldn't do it, I just tell them.
Any question on, uh, she wanted to say this individual is not from Walworth County, is that one that we even have to even have on the books?
I have to leave it there at this point, so they request, because now I have to prove that they are from Walworth County, so, it's there only because that is something down the road, and, and you know what? Um, when I see something, and then it comes out, and I call them, right, and say, listen, we sent you this notice, they should, and then I can tell you, here's the account number, your name, date of birth, I'm gonna tell you, this individual is not from Walworth County, and back to you, take the work, it's, that's the problem, it's, it's, so, you know, I'm always doing my diligence, definitely, we have a role, because then, I have to treat them, just, for the back, because, it's, it's, I know, it's, it, it, it's not a very specific sentence, of how it works, but it is getting better. If everybody cooperating, like, got a relationship with the Walworth County, I have to do it for this year, for sure, we have a good relationship with Walworth County, and then, when I have a question.
It just seems to me like it's, it's a, it gives us a lot of extra work, though, for you to have to go through this, and, and it's pretty obvious they're the, they're Walworth County.
No, it is, it is, but, here's what happens, why it comes to us, is because they, they, and then they got, either referred on, or. Maybe they were visiting, gave the Walbridge, gave, like, Walbridge address, or, you know, I mean, it, it, I don't think it's so much their part, because, there's times where I'll get things where, it is right on the border with Campbell County, or, or, uh. Our county, and I'll call up Jill, and I'll say, um, who's that, that's, so they, yeah, tell you, yeah, and then I'll, right away, tell them, you know, I will, this, uh, permit, that, they'll be, again, they're, like, a better two, and we'll, we'll, so that, they'll, they know. Um, there's another thing that happened, Neil McNamee's last member, has a Walbridge address, H C R, that, this is Walbridge, that's close to the incident, they call them, so, I have to call Joe Conley, that, that, who, 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 who's there in Walbridge, to find out the exact address, the physical address, so, you know, because I always tell them. We don't have H C R, and, obviously, you're, you're, so, some of this, because, probably, at the states, um, and then sometimes, um. It, it, you know, it's because of the proximity, I get a lot, sometimes, from, from an area right there on the border, of, and, and, the one, the one, oh, give me your physical address, oh, I don't know, or, I've even had it, the, by, by, but, we, there's, so far, actually. Yeah, because they don't know, it says a file address, but, your house might actually be in, in this town, or in nature, so, you know, so, you know, there's some honest mistakes, um, and I'm sure. No, they're a big company, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they should not try to do their job to the level of excellence, that we all went to our jobs, to, because they go through a lot of changes, and they, they're trying to straighten up their process at the same time, and there. Certain, certain, I know, that are just maybe, there are one office, and other writers, who go to another office, I want you to know, or, there, um, you know, I think, you should, that it's being at this, how, being at this, the answer to the question, or, how it else, almost, or, I think, how it should, how we're being, so, we have kind of a, a weird picture in there. Um, I do have two mental health questions, um, the first one is, twenty nineteen, eight point three, um, they said the individual was always in the, in the, six days, plus, um. I, it took me a while, and I'm diligent, I had to verify that there was actual employment, in, um, even though the individual is not here anymore, it does come back to us, on hospitals, requesting five thousand, three hundred, eight, what else, that is, that is, that is, I'd be worried about, like, seven hundred and five dollars, to the hospital, I would ask, and, and, for, um. I would ask them to take for, um, unless you have some questions, as you notice I put the statute down there too, if you want to sort of hear, um, of, of why we use case, some of these things and why we don't, um, this, I would like to have some promotion. This helps me.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I'll tell you, you got a second, any more discussion on this? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post they may.
Um, on the next page, we have, uh, twenty nineteen eight three three, obviously this is from two thousand nineteen, we have here, of course, we will type this. There's a lot of information to try and find out what you, what you call them, where you're dealing with them for, um, with you, other than for, um, this person was a German as well, this is a resident. We had, uh, the hospital is expecting fifty thousand, seventy, forty-two thousand, one of the Medicaid rate releases out every time. But there is also a small, uh, yeah, for this one, yeah, we'll have to go back to the other one, probably with the motions you want to have. But I made a motion that you, that we should stay this way as well.
Do you have a need a motion for that? They got both on the floor, I need a second. Second, any more discussion?
Um, usually, usually not, um, but that's how they did it, because we only have games. As of the summer, so when Yankton is full, then we have to go, we have to ask Yankton first and then the other facilities would agree to go at that super rate. And that would be, we would go to Waltz, we would go to Happy City, or you would go to Rapid City, thank you, Rapid City. Um, we, we would not pay that, but, um, unless for some reason, you know, we have, we find out if somebody is in one of those services. It depends upon when they search, if they saw action, if they didn't saw, see action, then there is different deals for each one. Um, I helped, uh, it was probably three years ago, gentlemen, that was, um, in the service and sign up was in, did his physical, they said no, and he was fully covered. And then there's people that if they didn't see any service later on, as time marches through, there are different conflicts or different orders, but if you didn't see that service, you're, you're uncovered. And now, now some part of the scale of service will have, hopefully, a benefit as well. For trying to, for life, so, you know, just you can, um, when they serve you, when they go, it's, um.
Yes.
What, what were we making a motion about?
Seven hundred and five.
This, just one minute.
Twenty nineteen eight three three.
So it's the seven hundred and five dollars on that? Any other discussion?
Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post they may.
No, I need right here, I, right, I've got, um, another motion for that. Um, twenty nineteen eight three three, there was the doctor bill as well that was included, um, in that, um, they were, for a hundred ninety-nine dollars. After the Medicaid rates, uh, five, a hundred thirty-five thousand. Um, that was due, there was the, uh, he needed to be med, the individual needed to be medically checked out by a doctor, not for the medical bill was part. So I, I would, I'm having a motion to keep at it.
Do a motion for that. I want, I, I. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I'll say, got a second, any more discussion on that? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post they may.
And then your final page, it's just a little uptick from what's happening with, uh, voluntary health benefits. Where they do a little, uh, which will, uh, share goal, right, so they do a little tracking on different items to kind of see where it's going. Right now, we have had fourteen voluntary goals, six were not resolved, you know, but again, they came through hospital. And so the, the service here, we have to be studying, uh, two were actual holds. So they have the cost of Q and H P, the cost transportation, medical costs from down from Yankton, from the employer to the reporter, to, um, sheriff's service. And all of those were, um, four were not, the names were just a positive. Um, out of the fourteen, one was homeless, but was in the war, Kelly, my statue, there's part of John to take care of that, there was, was a significant figure of what Kelly paid the Georgia. Um, there were seven that are western, three of these individuals had insurance or has insurance that they claim was, um, ninety, because that weekend. Believe the insurance period to expire, um, we're still dealing with that. Um, three of these are not held. Um, and one of those three with a homeless individual, um, in one. Three of these individuals, uh, they have insurance, four were hold in the cost of Q and H P, the cost transportation, medical costs, and three were not hold in the setting cost of Q and H P. Um, there were nine, Q and H P, that was completely, they passed a two hundred and twenty-nine dollars each, forty-four, two thousand twenty-five dollars. Moberich last year, we've been before, that is considered a low five, um, visits usually to the emergency room. Non Medicaid rates are anywhere is from sixteen hundred to two thousand dollars when that is. Um, then there was one with two hundred, that was, he got the cost for, I don't know. So just giving you a, a, a little uptick of what's going on, um, as far as these things, partly working on trying to make sure we have all of the labor center, um, just to give you a little, let's see that was coming to the end of the day. But, Jimmy, I have all you for medical, any questions?
I don't have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for seeing me, Alan.
Thank you.
I'm providing a calculation of those contracts for services that we, uh, advertise work, that's for your information. It is a public document, I believe, uh, that's for you to read. In the end, that, uh, I'm kind of disgusted, I'm not against bringing down practices, uh, with some of the work that we need to do. Uh, like I said, for your information. And I also provide, uh, some recently adopted certification for small projects, uh, that's the female work done. Uh, you don't see the upper right hand corner, what, uh, the total cost being heard was. And, uh, there are some projects that are inundated yet that are, uh, since have been grabbed up. Uh, uh, there has been quite a bit of the, the FEMA stuff that, uh, that required to get to this place. Uh, and a special, whether the total cost twenty hundred and two thousand seventy-nine dollars. Uh, we received payment of seventy-five percent of that in reimbursement. Uh, uh, there is the administrative cost, uh, I think she said something to the effect that there's still considering or calculating administrative cost to put together. Uh, somewhere around twenty or thirty thousand dollars in administrative cost that aren't shown in this total cost estimate yet. So somewhere along that, like, dollar mark that, uh, uh, that is projected over seasonal payments. Any question on that?
Oh.
I have a question for Jane, please, maybe anything to add, I don't think this was for the, for the, for the, for the, so. I think we need to start writing studies, cause we still.
Now this cost that we got here is hundred and two thousand, I mean, I know there was quite a lot that was given, that's just, there was almost.
That's actual cost.
Of what, you mean of what, it already done already?
Yes. Uh, broadly, it's like, uh, FEMA's last, like, like, uh, left, uh, I'm speculating over top wood water, forty inches, no. Uh, the grueling thing, uh, last long number was fifty-one inches of water on the road. Uh, those, uh, those are extended and, uh, for all, I think they can do one extension for eighteen months, but, uh, uh, FEMA has indicated that, uh, FEMA covers road damage. Uh, they don't cover road plottings, uh, no grade range expenses, uh, can be submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. Uh, they have to see physical damage on the road before they will participate in any, any improvement, right? I talked with the coordinator this morning, uh, he didn't make it into the state office of emergency, but that they are going to discuss some relative to, uh, funding grid rates. So it's, it's, it's been open here, and virtually it's been a ridiculous point, which is, uh, my must have just two inches is a good, so, so I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking five, six years, I don't know, three years or four years, I don't know. There was, uh, that, there was an email came, uh, asking for me to sign, uh, it's emergency, I was asked me to sign the grant document. Uh, respectfully, would you sign that? And then the bottom line, I really, but, uh, my intent is that, that, uh, in this case, it was grant monies perceived from FEMA that comes to the county and, uh, I was somewhat hesitant to sign it, that with the, with your office handle that, any of that gets a grant for the sheriff's department or any of the subdivision entities of government, so, uh, not as, and it's, I want to talk, what do I want to make it difficult to start? Moving on, uh, follow up discussion on more, uh, what else did I collect? I have some work on with both of us, uh, I started on more contractors or what it is, uh, then if you, if you get that back with.
Attempted to contact, all calls and stuff, you know, it was, so my recommendation would be is that rebid it and then whatever our costs are for pre-bid, the advertising and a lesser amount, if we get that, then we go after the individual before we do this. If we get the equal amount, uh, we still have our costs associated with it.
I got a question on that. What, you know about doing that rebidding again, it's obvious we can't get a hold of that guy. Would, this, that we recall, that was Gavin Moore's, who's the next one, we contact them and say, will you give us this amount? Of the, of the guy that had the twenty-seven thousand dollar bid. And if they say no, can we go to the, an individual that didn't bid it, or it's not clearly, let's say, will you give us the twenty-seven thousand, whatever that bid was?
Our obligation is to get our bids, so we had to at least see where, I mean, we can rebid it, um, and say it comes in it. The highest bid is at twelve thousand, reject those bids, because we would have a potential higher one, then maybe you could stand into that.
Well, I already know there's an individual right to check out the twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, I remember that, but then we have to go through that.
I, I was just wondering that.
It would be nice to do that, but you have to.
I'd say it's, I, what I was wanting to.
It was, it would be easier, which is it.
I'm gonna go through that. Cause we're trying oxygen, we're trying oxygen, they have to, one guy takes one finger, they ask the next one, well, do you want it for this price? Not to start over, so I just wanted to, just to make sure, I'm just curious, if it worked that way with me, it's really simple, not simple, but.
A lot easier, I'll check on that.
So to be, of yes, then whoever the individual is that wants, probably wants it.
I'll be able to, uh, here, I'll have to do that. Right, in the meantime, I have a skill. A motion to rebid it, that way you can actually, we already have that, which is why.
I would say at least that I fault, I would, I would rebid.
What we already accepted is, so now all we need to do is do a motion to rebid that, if in the meantime, if there's something to do that with regard to simultaneously wanting for that, I could have, and we have to rebid it, we already got that, so.
So like I said, I've already done the obligation, I think, if my eyes are, if I ask you that, it could work that way.
Both answers, yes, and we will need to go to it, but I would still do a motion to rebid it.
Do we gotta reject the other one first?
Nothing. We already accepted the.
We are accepting.
So, um, I don't think we need to do anything on that, because I think we can still pay. But I would still be, I'd be, I'd be.
Right, I would take, yes, like.
The beta notice doesn't state how we call it, we have to pay.
I don't think so, but he would have, nobody has, I think several of us have tried contacting, you know.
You left me a message, she's holding a phone number, so I called it back. You left me a message, she's holding a phone number, so I called it back, it was a person, right?
The reason I ask this, is because it's me. And just have to hold, so you make a motion to, because I'm calling, he's on the.
I would take a motion for that, so. Kay, you got the motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, any more discussion on that? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, question passed.
Discussion on motor vehicle warranty, which is firing seven twenty-six, two thousand per ton. Uh, I have an email from Jack Morgan, uh, the monthly sales rep. Uh. The unit. You know, pushed in, with purchase for the five-year warranty. Uh, I believe that was extended warranty, five-year. And now the extended warranty is going to expire. Uh. From what I'm speculating, the year to do the replacement in two thousand twenty-one. Unless we. Consider purchasing one this year. And we'll try to get into a budget projection here. I, we do have additional, like I said, this due to expire on seven twenty-six, seven twenty-eight. And uh. In my opinion. That uh, the original buyback option will go away or not, for that expired. Uh, the original buyback option, or whether it's empty, uh, then we're subject to, what do we do, deciding to rotate it? Uh, we'd be subject to. A potential loss of revenue with a surplus sale. Uh, I don't want to give you numbers, but uh. There won't be a guaranteed buyback in twenty-two. Uh. What the landlord was offering is that, that they will do another extended warranty. For five hundred hours to get it, to get us the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the doubting about uh, this situation is that they're only in charge of powertrain and hydraulics. Uh. And it's. A six-month extended warranty is thirty-one fifteen, and the other's a twelve-month extended warranty is thirty-three hundred. So the, the question is, kind of from me to you, and that you guys always go. Thirty-one hundred dollars for six months of warranty? Or thirty-three hundred dollars for five months of warranty? Or, they're Johnsons, they're not, they're in warranty.
My opinion is that offer is a real good idea.
Well, let me ask you, if we did the extended warranty, does that give us a guarantee buyback?
I believe no. I will ask the question of the brother diesel, but uh. I don't think, uh, I'll, we said, that it's, it's back to me if we.
I agree with Scott, to me, the extra dollars for the warranty is, at this point, waste, but if it guarantees the buyback, gotta fix the whole track. I could stop aside, uh, I'm on the way to go beside that. I'm back here, I'm here for you.
When is this one? So, finding out, uh, seven-year rotation for all of these?
Yeah, yeah, this day is the game, I don't know, I'm not willing to go there yet. Uh, I'm a little high, it's not going up. But that's crazy, that's why we got five years to seven, you're not going to be there. We're not going to give a seven-year rotation. That's your plan on, or change all of these out. This one here is from a re-put that's done. Nobody's still following, so, I don't think it's going to be used. I think from this one on, there is no guaranteed buyback. And from this one on, it's a seven-dollar warranty, I believe. And uh. I'm not. I'm not hopeful, like, president of the commission, but uh, I'm a little bit concerned that, that less of later, might give to the seven dollars, and we're back into that situation of, of uh, yeah, by the way, the warranty. What I have been, uh, 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 this is not as many, just for stuff for the vendor. But uh, uh, the, the discussion just now, that uh, uh, if, if you've got an abundance of uh. Elbow fingers in your fleet, and the time that's coming, where you bring those units in to your service department, and go through them, and offer a new unit with five thousand hours of warranty. And uh, provide us a unit that plus a gosh, what it brings you, right? Uh, I think the discussion that are going on, uh, you know, kind of flirt with saying stuff publicly that I was using. Uh, but, it's not, it's a conversation. In fact, I have responded to your question, if I, if I, if I. Ultimately, in my opinion, I, I don't give a, give a real brothers, that, right, you can get down by it. I, I'd rather have something that.
Very thick, certainly.
I live in, I live in town, that's. There are other counties that are actually buying, uh, county surplus units. Uh, from the other county, and bring in members of their fleet, and like, say for this, this one, a guaranteed buyback of one fifty. Uh, there's other counties that are buying these units, buying seal bits. Uh, government surplus recommended, they're playing a lot of double A. I suspect some really big owner, and they surplus, you know, which I think is good. Likes to do, yeah.
It's not mine, though. What, you went right now, is that two fifty?
Uh, well, it doesn't, so it did most of everything, so. It was, um. What do you think, should we go on another extended warranty, exactly, I, I'm, I'm rewarding, okay? But in order to, uh, build that surplus.
My opinion is that I don't trust these issues. I don't think we're doing, I don't think.
And hydraulics, hydraulics. I'll say nothing. What, the, like, that was right beside it, they didn't, they were pulling it down.
But the rest of the issues. Yes, and we're getting that guarantee, I haven't had that, so. He tried that once, and offered, sure. No, we have, I've done times, if we reject the bids on a lot, so, didn't, didn't wait. Maybe, wasn't too bad. Yeah, guys. We put one in that online auction, yeah. That didn't, for a whole one, I think. One time, good. But I play.
For a warranty worth a lot, uh, worth a lot of good, yeah.
I mean, there's some of that stuff, very expensive, I don't know. All the dream, the cost of bucks. And well, that, that's what, that's very tough, I feel. Many, I, our, everything else.
We messed up public hearing for, it ends up being, it was supposed to be one day. So, if you want to, we can call, we can do that quick. With things.
Yeah.
We should probably do that. Do you have any answer? Yeah.
Uh, it's, it was just a little bit, that's a good point, uh, I don't like that. As long as it just, it works out like a thing without, uh, they say a hundred percent of the value of performance, service.
Okay, then we'll, I'm gonna go to that number nineteen, the public hearing, it's a private rule. Just for the county naming, some private rules. Public hearing, we held at Wallace County Board of Commissioners, on the fourth day of June twenty twenty, we get a ninety-three day commissioners' chambers meeting, at Wallace County Courthouse, forty-three oh four, Fourth Avenue, Self-Subtlety, to consider a petition filed by Dean Schumacher, of the county's contract, the owners of the private rules. Same with county, the county can provide maintenance on private rules. The public can decide to attend the hearing, and to testimony, and comments pertaining to the petition. For the county maintenance on private rules, in the best interest of the hearing, or in terms of the maintenance in the best interest of the residents. The county, the county to maintain private rules, the board may authorize a high-risk challenge, to enter contracts. The maintenance of private rules by the county, the contract may not include a per-hour cost of maintenance, which is less than the county's total cost for such maintenance. The contract may be for more than six hours of maintenance per year, for any one person, it is a good day, day of twenty twenty. I would take a motion for that. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. What's that? For the second, any more discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, question passed. If that's not, we're pretty, and thirty-three hundred, a lot, a lot of money, really, for it. Also, to me, if we, if we, if we can achieve buyback, nobody will take thirty-three hundred dollars, it's not a big deal, to have that. But if you're gonna get tips and teeth, it's, it is, because of the number of buyers, then, the worst. But I think two-hundred thousand dollars, a hearing, a lot of counties are, I guess, in our mind, are, in, 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 so. Everybody knows that, even Butler's giving us that hundred fifty thousand buyback. You know, good, well, you could sell, like, more of it. Guaranteed, first of all, it's about itself. And all of that. They're clean, they're all, right, 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 they're, they're clean. When you get the money, it's like, I didn't really get that, it sounded bad. Uh, it. That's my. So you look to the. First, I would. Not to, not to come in, that are great, but, yeah. That's different. You're, you're saying, we don't, we don't. Right, I, I, that's my opinion, I don't, I don't think that's worth it. We're doing, for us, for, 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 for. So, we're focused, so. So, it's not a county, but, I was looking for, our county, we're, we just. A lot of counties are seeing that, we can't afford to go for five, two thousand hours, like. Do you, we, we put the other one, so my, so. Yeah. All right, I'm watching, uh, I wasn't that long ago, was it? Two, three, four, five, six. That, that was a long, I think, uh, I don't know, it's, it's. Everybody, all my last, yeah, that, that's it.
Uh, just what we've done, I, we have to sit there.
I feel like, we, 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 so, we had to reject it, uh, one, I, I was talking about.
Yeah, I think that, I want to, you can't, uh, we, you're, you're, yeah, uh, you're, you're, yeah, uh, you're, basically. I would request, you can, I'm considering. Alright, there's some stuff for that, or uh. It appears that uh, once we go, go beyond seven thousand hours, we're doing, like that. Uh, but it's kind of, here, now, the upper level, whether it's corporate, capital, or Butler. Is saying, has let these counties be these units, and give them. A good extended warranty, or a future rate. So uh, I'd like to maybe, uh, I would, sell, move, or, 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 uh, here, and then, and then, so.
That's, please, that's. So, just for, like, personally, we, we kept, yeah, we. Yeah, that, that's, 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 very well, I mean, what.
In May of eighteen, while your pay is a hundred fifty-five thousand.
Yep. We can, we can, we can, like, you can.
Uh, I'd like to have these officers, we do, uh, we kind of, for, 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 uh, you have something here. Uh, normally, I would have a site, property, uh, just a tiny front, basically. Uh, I'd like, Russell Javel, for me, and uh, for, 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 and, and, uh. Uh, right now, I'm just, I'm, I'm working on two sites, and seventy thousand, uh, thirty-five, a good site. And uh. I would be, get out, uh, you just start out, preventing one site. One site, know where the sites are, uh, and you got an idea, for, uh, so.
I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. I got a second, any more discussion on that? Here, you, you, you have any other shit for me?
Well, I do. Back in my original plan, uh, you wanted to target at least twenty thousand BP guns. Because of the break point, in theory, that the contractor, if you're under that, uh, it costs more. Uh, that's a break point, that twenty thousand minimum. And uh, uh, with the mobilization costs are, are on a fair level, by itself.
Any other discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, question passed. Any questions?
Uh.
I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm, here, just, I'm, but uh, here, so, uh, uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Last year, we had Sam Specter out, all morning, looking everything over, and he, he didn't, he told me, great. You can tell us, let's hear, you're gonna use the paper, not over there. So, that was, pretty good, eh? Uh. Your motion to, 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 please, reach.
Okay, I'll take a motion for eleven thirty-five, if we can, always, if we're so. Here goes motion on the floor, I need a second. Got a second, more discussion on that? Here none, all favorites say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, question asked.
Um, especially regarding silver rules.
I talked to Louis last night and he told me, he said that. They're really gonna be bringing the excavator tomorrow, so positively, positively. What we would really like is for. Randy or Kyle to be there, so I think. Get their name, exactly the means to be finished in how much. Maybe if you get a hold of Randy, that's what he said, he said. It would be tomorrow or Monday. We talked about beyond other things though. He was coming out of my way. Okay, he did say that, that he was still going to be at the pre-dogs. He wants to get that signed back, we have signed it in forty thousand. I should have said more, okay? But that's okay.
What's your opinion, can we change that?
Um. I think we should. What he said, he said the only reason why he said we didn't get this for the building, he said he had to get permission to pass the brings and stuff. Otherwise it would have been, but I know what it doesn't matter, but it's. Today legally changed the dates on the real initial on the separate back and the initial one based on. But maybe we bother. We would have to be signed, I mean, that we can always shoot on it. Everyone had to sign it today, um. And the main thing I want to make is like this.
Great, I agree.
Cause that's.
I totally agree.
That would be my recommendation is that. Have Randy. Cause anybody that.
Yeah, he played a lot of their office.
I always thought it's selfish, but I always thought. He's like the answer to him, every time I call. I'll lie for you this time, um. Because his attorney drafted that, so after we meet, contact. And if it was supposed to say, if you're trying to do that, and you sign it forward to us and we'll get it signed. With any date.
We want the date to be the end of the month, so we don't get off to when they.
That's up to you, um. My recommendation maybe. It's not like. Be, that's, that's what. The policy is like that, it's.
What, what was the, what was the timeframe, or what are the things the timeframe was to finish what you need to?
Cause I'm.
Hate to give them too much time because then all it does, then all it does is just, oh, well, we got more time than we just push it back.
I'm not gonna say everything, right? What do you think would be? Like the twentieth? Yeah, yeah, custody is what they're for. So if they're supposed to be here tomorrow, that's sixteen days forward. I think so, because like I said. Things are happening, I'm just saying. What I was looking for. You want. So um. We have twenty or twenty, what's a twenty for? Are we, we're having a meeting in twenty-four. Well, yeah, we're just going to. First, and you want to get ready in there or a man down. I think we probably want to do a motion if you authorize. The extension of that agreement, if the first could do it, then authorize. I should just show you to sign that same agreement, but the only thing that has changed is the. Yes, David.
May request two for that, that is only nature of the place on her name, not without the ring of faith. Yeah, why don't you have anything else?
So that's my. Maybe you were there. My rights, come on, you might, the whole life I did is within this. That's impossible, it's literally is possible. I don't think you better bring up a lot of your questions.
I have a motion to. Sign new contract, that's not, sign new contract, push the date. Completion date that to Monday the twenty-second.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Second. Got a second, thirty, any more discussion on that? Do you want to call events until I probably answer your phone call or do you want us to? I'll do this fine right now. Okay. Thank you, I would like to stop thinking. I've never met a guy in my life. Any other thing else? Here none, all favorites say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, question asked.
Recycling center.
Uh I guess I have one question. President, what we showing a lot of enemies, they don't wanna keep that up, correct?
Well, residents don't want to, we have people coming from open from all over the areas. They have lots of phone calls, not wanting to go away, they actually want it to be open right now, or leases to the end of this month. So you can decide, so you can get a new lease for six months, but even if we are gonna close it. We have to have time, any of this month to get all that so. And so. We have a lot of money that's in the.
I go, you had, I figured all that out. I started, there's quite a lot over there than what anybody thinks. Now the trailers cost quite a lot of money.
I mean, I. I thought maybe it would. We're using a lot of problems, like people ask me, like, for acceptance, I don't know. It's, it's never something very. Um but. There's thought maybe the city of London could work. And again. I don't know, and. We don't want to stick away.
That's what's going on, government, pressure and everything. It's a lot.
So I.
Not only that, but I mean, there's, there's been a lot of stuff in there, and just. Recycling stuff is there.
Anyway. Hope that didn't hold that way. So I was thinking we should probably just take some of these to the theater.
What is, what are you gonna do with stuff? Is that what?
We have.
Yeah, but I'm saying. But I need to be taken.
Yeah, they didn't see right now, people. Maybe somebody can take it. We don't have to follow up with. Was it?
What is the cost per horse? I know why you're on it.
Oh, it's about two hundred dollars, uh two hundred dollars for utilities. And that, two guys, a day leave for about five hours. Our, our wage.
Easy, same twenty grand either, it's possible.
And. These solar, they're gonna have to get up for a hundred dollars. I don't believe that, I mean, you have these.
Yes, I, uh, recycling part. A question whether or not it's, it's people that really wanna recycle, or is it the fact that people just don't wanna spend money to get rid of the rubbish and use it in a recycling center? To bring stuff to.
Well, I think a lot of home, you have every problem, you can't say in conference, so I'm much hurt. A lot of people are very, very concerned about.
I mean, just, let's just say that, like, and if we keep buying with it. You're gonna run out of rope.
Yeah, and it's just my thought anyway.
But I mean, can a guy, like, say, would we produce? Can a guy stack them up there? Are they gonna, how heavy are they to build like? Like the plastics.
Plastics are small.
I'm just saying, if, if a guy can stack them up there, and if prices ever came up more, you know, it's not.
Where?
Oh, I mean, up on that top, it's not being used.
Well, we have.
Oh, what's your last question? Not questions.
Uh, we move out there and it's fine. Yeah, so we can stack them and get another six months.
So is there any potential engine that works for that, or are we gonna be paying fifteen dollars a dollar a year for a recycle thing?
Or is there's no.
You mean, your feed expenses? No, I would say no. That's, that was my, that's my. That's my, it sounds good to recycle, but when nobody's buying the stuff, we don't have an avenue to get rid of it, and we have to get rid of it someplace, so if we're gonna throw it in the landfill anyway. Why are we spending money on a recycle center? Um, we have a lot. Quick, right, right?
There's probably some other. Or maybe, maybe we should really think of putting it together and save, save it over. Let's just say that we got fifty thousand in equipment, which I, I, I'm gonna guess is pretty much worth it. And what if we, we're just, I'm, I'm just gonna sort of figure out, okay, what can see if we give us thirty thousand dollars and true. Hey, I'm just throwing that number out, or, or maybe we should leave that, if we're responsible to do that. Hard to, hard to sell up for losing. But if they're, I mean, if they're dumb, hold on a lot of. That's not true.
We'll get it anyway.
Yeah, but I'm.
We'll get a reduced rate then.
But then, we'll be out, kind of, it's all a.
Then they start accepting it, and then they have the way to speak it, they're gonna start up to do it for free.
Yeah, I have a question, would you just.
Yep.
Uh, I would suggest that we. Right?
Yeah, I think we need those other things, but.
I just. Selling it, whatever. I'm a chance to steal this. Or the, like, we should offer it to other person or not.
I mean, somebody could have a discussion like from behind, like, you said that we're having to. Because that's just takes the whole.
I'm not here to just hold it out there, you just later ask the goodness. Go to that, but you know, instead of the rest, I don't really think I'll let you stop in there. So. Don't be surprised if some of the shows up.
So we wanna go visit the city? It's, it's real close, I mean, I, I just threw that, I think, out, but I mean, to me, I think it would be, would be right for us to just. Just under one million dollars, to see if they wanna make some sort of arrangement. Take it.
I mean, at least, at least in six months, or three months, or a month, or.
Well, do you want to stop the water there?
And if someone were taking, I mean, even if let's just say, city owners would do it, I mean, they need a place, something like that. Yes, they, the city owners, if they're already just wanting to eat, but they're not the.
Garbage too, do you want?
Yeah, but I mean, they'd have to have a place to set up.
Hey, John, maybe we should talk to Corson County City, we can take our garbage, hope we are protect your entrance.
Okay, then. That would get through that. Stand their lease.
It's up to you.
In it.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll make a motion, I think, so that we someday.
All right, I got a motion on the floor, need a second. I just think, any more discussion on that? Guess the only thing that I'd like to say before we do it. Get something done by now. Yes, we know what's up, he's. To be, uh, I would assume that. I think with somebody that Green says, like, that's something. All right. Any other discussion? Here none, all favorites say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay, question asked.
The next thing is, you guys have discussed possibly being credits, or maybe. All these. That one too.
Oh, you can't leave the one that's not going to. We need a hundred more. This is, this is looking at the size of the scene. No, I don't think. I guess you don't have the science. I don't want to come by any other county, decide on a town, should be around that, to me, I mean, this is.
I, I guess, to me, that's where I'm at. You didn't hold it for a lot of time. Yes, sir.
Five, twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand.
Really, that's fast. I would say twenty-five, so, what, what is your guess? Yes, I wanted to just, uh, making, I was just hoping that we'd cap it. At all of them, for twenty-five thousand, they were having to come in and request. So if somebody comes in, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-three, we can say, oh, hey. On the side, and five, or a cap, scare one back, so we should get a cap on it. The best, I mean, it's just a suggestion. Well, wait, why would somebody, wait, no, because if, uh, didn't Kyle say that they had seventy of them? They had a hundred, it was a hundred, a hundred and eight ton, I think, and seventy of them.
Yeah, I didn't. I don't know what's going on.
So.
Yeah.
Seventy of them, I mean, hell, that's only. Only a couple, hundred each, but, not easy. They had seventy of them. Uh, so, do you like how David said?
So, take a motion. Think, whatever. Like their request?
Yes. I don't really, uh, uh, personally, not to see twenty-five thousand. I mean, about twenty-five, twenty-five thousand. I would. I mean, are you, you're asking, you're asking, you're asking. I need a motion. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, need a second. Let's see. I have a second, any more discussion, I'm ready. Yes. Question. Should have came in. They should have, like, what, they should have came in Austin, or some. Yes. Anything else? You're none, all favorites say aye.
Aye.
All say aye. Motion back. Any further questions, we officially have this, uh, two, second, point, uh, uh, which.
We each have two reasons. So, we think, we want to do is. Open the, 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 to pull them out, so you know, any orders from every town. Um, within five.
Do we have to sign anything, or just?
Uh, when you're done.
Um, I'm.
Now, the tape and the printout, it's that, so you need to look at the printout, and make sure that those numbers are entered. Or what is on the. These tapes are a thing, to find where, which they seem to, like, five. We really need to change those, so we're actually. Numbers. Some of them are from. Okay? Yeah, release, I.
Okay?
Don't worry about the, the doors, probably. Numbers that, what you showed, kept it off, or what was. Option C, these are option C, R, R G B's. Can you? I, I got it. It worked too well, three, and all matched, and.
I know. You know, register, what's on your.
That's when, um, somebody would walk back from our class.
Oh.
So, they didn't care about this one, so they just didn't want.
I don't know about us, the Democrats didn't. Three, I would be this research. I don't care.
There's all of them. And then you sound like a lying, but both of these are the best to have. Yeah.
I would never, I can't with.
Yep. I also wanna mention that, uh, you're very faithful to our question through. As we have been using this auction trailer, and selling it. Last minute. Really hold up. So, remember, the first, first half, there. You were informed on Friday that the thing is, the scene is, uh, selling. You were to follow laws, to location. We didn't cut. I mean, I would, I would, so, we, that trailer, that location. And it actually worked out pretty well. A bit, just annoying, and I'm working on it. For the good life.
So, that's the death.
Where there's any one, and then four, four weeks.
And as the cut goes. Or, or, just over them.
Okay, so, I need a motion to.
All right, four, two, one. Okay, I got a motion on the floor, need a second, or second, or a second. Any more discussion? Here none, all favorites say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye, discussion stops. Any else? Any more business? Do business? I got a motion on the floor, need a second. All favorites say aye.
Aye.